Again, everyone, we're going to start the meeting, so if you're going to continue your conversation, please take out into the hall. Okay, let's call this meeting the Haysville Plenary Commission, and order of first item business is roll call.
You're going to have to get louder than that.
Williams?
Here.
Tru?
Here.
Coleman? Asia?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Rinkie? Vlad?
Here.
Next item of business is the approval of minutes to July tenth, twenty twenty-five. And would we approve them?
Okay.
Any corrections? A motion second to approve is presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
I am staying.
Under due business, we have a public hearing for his own change request from SF, single-family residential to MF four, multi-family four residential for property generally located at sixty-four oh one South Sunnyside Road. Protect the rights of all parties involved in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinion and present information, the Hazel Plenary Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision, a copy is available by the door. We now formally open the public hearing to consider proposed zone change from SF, single-family to MF four, three or four-family residential. Any members of the Plenary Commission have any conflict or interest in this case?
No.
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 Have many members received any written or electronic communication on this matter?
No.
No.
Staff, please present.
So the applicant is requesting a zone change from SF, single-family, to MF four, multi-family residential, for property generally located at sixty-four oh one South Sunnyside. The property is just under half an acre and is located at the intersection of sixty-third and South Sunnyside, but it only has access to South Sunnyside, which is a paved, one-way local road. The property is currently undeveloped and has access to city water and sewer. It was platted in nineteen fifty-one as Lot One, Block One, Ward's Fourth Edition, Sedgwick County, and was later annexed into the City of Hayesville, and at that time annexation, it was designated as parkland on our land use map. The current land use designation is residential, and the property was sold to the current property owner by the City of Hayesville in June twenty twenty-three. The surrounding properties are mostly single-family residential. Properties to the north are rural residential and used primarily for agricultural purposes, but do have two single-family homes. Properties to the east are zoned SF, single-family residential, and contain a large lot, single-family dwelling. Properties to the south and west are zoned, single-family, and contain, single-family dwellings. And properties to the southeast are zoned, heavy commercial, and contain an auction house, truck and trailer rental, and shed sales. Such heavy commercial activities are buffered from the single-family dwellings by a tree-covered section of the property. The property owner's agent is here to address any questions related to the development of this site, but such proposed development is not a criteria in the consideration of this zone change. This review is only on evaluating the suitability of the property for the MF four, multi-family zoning district. Future development could include any use permitted under the MF four regulations. Prior to the publication of this staff report, we had not had any public objection to the zone change, but at noon today, I received an email from Deborah Holder, the property owner immediately to the south of this property, who is in objection of the zone change. Her email is included at the end of the staff report and has all of the attachments she sent, which include violations from the City of Wichita for the applicant's properties in Wichita, and some pictures of the property as it stands now. The current zoning, SF, single-family residential allows for low-density, single-family development, while the requested zoning, MF four, allows for multi-family, medium-density development. Both districts allow limited amount of public and civic uses aimed to serve the needs of those living in neighborhoods. The table below in your staff report shows the development standards for each zoning district, and as you can see, the only difference is that the maximum height is forty-five feet in single-family and is only thirty-five feet in MF four, so you can actually build higher in single-family than you can in multi-family. But the subject property meets all of our standards for development. In the making of this report, staff utilized the golden rules. The first is which, the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood. As mentioned before, the predominant land use of this neighborhood is single-family residential, except for those properties to the north that are agriculture and properties to the southeast that are heavy commercial. Golden rule number two is the suitability of the subject site for the uses of which it's been restricted, which the subject site is currently zoned SF, single-family, and is suitable for low-density, single-family residential development, which is appropriate given the context of the surrounding neighborhood. Golden rule number three is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. In your staff report, you see a list of uses that are permitted conditionally or by right in the MF four district. Those uses are two-family, three-family, multi-family, daycare, hospital, and nursing facility. While a hospital would not work on this lot because it's not big enough. Multi-family, daycare, and nursing facility are all conditional uses as well. And removing the restrictions of SF and increasing to MF four could detrimentally affect nearby property if special consideration is not taken to ensure development occurs at house scale. If it is taken and the development is occurred at house scale, two and family and three and four-family development can integrate seamlessly with the existing neighborhood. House scale development typically means smaller building footprints, lower perceived density, activated building fronts with the building facing the street, and front porches, and having parking hidden behind the building. In your staff report, there's some examples of this type of development. The city also has some provisions in our zoning regulations, our parking regulations, and our landscaping regulations that already protect single-family development from the potential adverse effects from multi-family development. One of those is the landscaping regulations where a buffer of fifteen feet for landscaping is required between all two-family or single-family development and anything three, four, or higher. That regulation also requires all parking to be screened from the abutting, single-family or two-family development. Staff does not recommend that any of the uses that were commercial, that are not residential, that are allowed in MF four, not be allowed on this property because access is only from South Sunnyside, which is a paved, one-way local street. The width of the street doesn't meet the city's minimum standards for local streets. It has no available on-street parking. Thus establishments that would generate traffic would detrimentally affect nearby properties and potentially cause issues with public safety. So non-residential uses would be considered if South Sunnyside was a two-way road, but unfortunately it's not. The fourth golden rule is the length of time the subject property has remained vaguely zoned. It has been undeveloped since it was platted in nineteen fifty-one. The fifth, the fifth golden rule is the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare as compared to the loss in value imposed on the applicant. Staff does foresee a negative effect to public safety as a result of the approval of this zone change because it only has access to South Sunnyside. The applicant did request access to sixty-third street, but that was denied by Sedgwick County. And depending on the location of the driveway, staff foresees that those exiting the property may be encouraged to drive the wrong way on the one-way road. During the site visits for the staff report, staff did not see any current residents going the wrong way down the road.
Is there a way for you to turn up the sound so we can hear?
There is not, ma'am. If you would like to scoot forward to one of these chairs, that might help you a little bit to sit beside where you could hear a little bit better.
That won't help. I can't hear him when he talks.
Golden rule number six is conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan, which it is in conformance to our comprehensive plan. It's in conformance of population objective number three and the housing goal, which
Don't have to complain about that, too.
Which increase housing diversification within the community and provide a variety of housing choices to future and current populations. It's also in conformance with our land use map because it is designated as residential. Staff also does not expect a negative impact to community facilities for this. And the last golden rule is opposition from neighboring residents, in which we had one neighbor state opposition prior to this meeting. So considering all those golden rules, staff is recommending approval of this zone change, but with a protective overlay. We'd only be allowing residential uses, so single-family, two-family, three- and four-family, group homes, which is a state statute, and home occupations that don't generate traffic, and also short-term residential rentals. There'll be four site development standards. The principal structure has to face South Sunnyside. It has to have a porch at all the main entrances, and that porch has to be built at the step-back line or in front of it. The maximum height of all structures can only be twenty-five feet or two stories, and the exterior of all structures has to be brick or vinyl. Parking has to be in the back, behind the principal structure, but it could also be located in hard-surface driveways. And access has to be, complete access control has to be dedicated for the north thirty feet of street frontage. There is a secondary recommendation in here if planning commission would like to recommend a zone change to two-family. The only difference in that protective overlay is the exclusion of three and four-family. But the agent is here to speak if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff?
No.
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 For the applicant's agent, he wants to speak.
Josh White, K. Miller Engineering, I'm the agent for the applicant. We agree with all the staff comments, including the alternative recommendation. We initially submitted this application for MF four with the idea of a site plan that would require MF four zoning. Since then, the owner has opened it up to developments that would only require two-family zoning. So we agree with all of the recommendations and the protective overlays. I can answer any other questions that you guys might have.
Any questions?
No.
No questions.
Thank you. Okay, now's the time for any member of the public to speak. You have five minutes. If you are presenting good factual information, this time may be extended. I have quite a few here signed up to speak. If you're going to say the same thing as the two people in front of you and the two people behind you, I would ask that you elect a spokesperson.
I can't hear you.
Can everybody else hear me? Okay.
We can't hear you.
I'm going to ask, if you're going to say the same thing as the two people in front of you and the two people behind you, elect one person to speak for you, and we'll give that person more time if we need, rather than ten people saying the same thing, I assure you, we are listening. Okay? It would make all of our time a little bit quicker if you're all going to say the same thing. So if you would like to do that, let us know which of you would like to speak. Otherwise, I'll start rolling through each one of these in the order that I have them sitting here. No thoughts? All right. Joe Burns. Kaylin, you got time?
Yeah, I can keep time. Yes.
Yeah.
The
Please start with stating your name and address for us for the minute record.
Joe Burns, sixty-four thirty-nine South Sunnycen, or sixty-four thirty-nine South Sunnyside. I'm not sure what your policy is on this, but one thing I don't understand is I live four houses, five houses down from where this zoning has taken place. Not one word was said to me. We live on a one-way street, barely wide enough for one car, and they want to add four more buildings or four more apartments to this. I don't even think the road can handle what's there, but they want to add four more buildings to this corner with, I don't know if these are one, two, three, four, or five-bedroom apartments. Don't know whether they're suctionate, don't know what we're getting. I always thought maybe there'd be something here that says, we're going to plant an exit on sixty-third, but from what I hear, that's not going to happen. You're going to dump all the traffic onto a one-lane road that is probably about twelve, maybe fifteen feet wide at best. And I mean, that's just a guess, but I'm, and I'm just curious, has any of you ever been over to that area? Maybe drive past it, but have you been down the streets, been through the neighborhood? I know the law enforcement don't get down there much, so I don't know if you do either, but problem is, we're dealing with a lot of traffic in a small area. Luckily, we don't have a lot of kids in down there anymore because there are too many people coming the wrong direction. UPS, FedEx, Amazon. None of them know what a one-way sign is because we get them coming the wrong way all the time. So I'm opposed to the idea of putting a multi complex on the corner to congest traffic in a way that is just on a road that I don't think is able to handle it. And so that's all I got to say at this time.
Thank you. For clarification, what was the notification radius?
Two hundred feet to the west and the east because that's city limits, and then a thousand feet in the west because that's out of city limits.
And south?
South was two hundred feet.
Okay.
So just for everybody that, so you know, that's set by state statute? That notification range is set by state statute, that's what we followed.
It was what, two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet in city limits and a thousand feet outside of city limits.
Okay, Glenda West?
Two hundred feet around.
The only thing I would notify.
Oh.
Glenda West?
Glenda. That's you.
Would you like to speak?
I'm just
She can't hear you.
I'm just against it because I'm I live, I have the biggest lot close to it. It's going to be right in my backyard. And I just, I don't want all the kids coming over and climbing on my trees. They won't have any place to play or anything on that if they put an apartment there. And I just don't want it to be changed, so.
Do you want to speak for the record? Your name and your address for the record?
Glenda West, one hundred West Sunflower Drive.
Sorry if I cut you off.
Thank you, Glenda. Pauline?
I'm going to talk so you can hear me. I live at sixty-four hundred Keystone. My name is Pauline Osmond, and I have sit in many of these seats from time to time. Four apartments on that property is too much. That means at least four cars and maybe eight. And you have Sunnyside Road, that is a half-street, and it's difficult now. It's not good. Plus the fact that we have had an apartment, well, a rental situation where the owner is away, and it has given us nothing but fits, including shootings. So we're not interested in having that in our community. It's been a single-family community for this long, and it needs to stay that way.
Thank you, Pauline. Tammy Wicker, or Tommy Wicker, I apologize.
Tommy Wicker, I live at six-four-one-five South Sunnyside, immediately south of that property. Start with, that place has been a park ever since I can remember. I realize it was recently sold. That came up with conversation after we rebuilt our driveway next door there. And I asked the city at that time if they'd consider selling me that property because I've watched over it and maintained it for more than a decade, short of mowing the place because Hayesville took care of that. It was listed as a park for a very long time. Neighbor kids play there. We use it for overflow parking sometimes, as you've heard, we can't park on the street out there. Sometimes we have our Fourth of July celebrations and shoot off our fireworks and stuff in that open lot. It's really nice for the neighborhood. I wake up in the morning and have my coffee and look out the window and see the trees and beautiful open lot. It's real peaceful there right now. I realize it's probably not going to be soon, and that's a damn shame. I wish you guys had considered selling it to me or keeping it in the fucking park. Excuse my language, but pretty emotional subject for me right now. I don't know how to convince you to fix this. You guys are clearly interested in money. It sucks for all of us, and it's going to create, you know, as the folks have said, it's a lot more traffic. It's going to be people looking in my driveway, looking in my windows, being next to my house twenty-four-seven when I haven't had nobody there for my entire existence at that property. I just don't know how to explain to you guys how you've steered wrong on this moment here. I wish you'd reconsider. Please don't, please don't do that to us. Thanks.
Kelly Poe. My name's Kelly Poe. I live at sixty-four twenty South A Street. My landlord is sitting here with me. He brought it to my attention that this was happening. I didn't know anything about it until today. I apologize, and most of these people are my friends and neighbors. Maybe you. But bottom line is, I am considering purchasing the property I live in right now, and that would probably deter me from really sinking some money into that. I just, I just don't feel it's right for that community. That community is pretty tight. Some of my neighbors that I visit with quite often are here, but bottom line is, I do like that place, and I would, I would hate that this would be considered because it could be detrimental to my landlord, and he's a pretty good guy. Just want you all to consider that. Like I said, I am new to this, I just found out today. I said I want to go because he's offered the property and this could change my mind towards that. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kelly. Tim Ford?
Well, as Kelly just said, I'm Tim Ford. I own the property over there and have for twenty-five years, something like that. I've never been to one of these, I don't know how it works. I just know that based on what little bit of information that I was given, which I have to be with them over here, was very vague. You all say that you've been there. So I have to ask you, if you've truly been there, do you really think that you could put a building there and six, eight cars? I'd have to ask you to really think about that because I could build anything, anywhere, but is it really truly accessible? That is a one-way street, and based on what you had said before, that property is going to face Sunnyside. Its entrance is going to be on Sunnyside, and the parking is going to be in the rear, which would be at Glenda's back door. I don't see that kind of access there. I've got a little building experience, little construction knowledge. I may be facetious when I say that. If somebody wants to take me over there and show me, I'd like to see that. I don't know at this point, I'm in neutral. I don't know at this point where I stand on it, but I think you should probably take a look at that and maybe listen to the neighborhood. that and maybe listen to the neighborhood. Um, I built a built duplex one time, and, and I think it was on a lot larger than that. So, I don't, I don't, I just don't see it happening. So, I'd like for you to listen to the neighborhood, make your decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Joe Amos?
Yeah, Joe Amos, 205 E 63rd Street. I'm basically right across the street from that property, though, to the, to the east, okay? The big question I've got is on the infrastructure of the road and the sewer, because I know from conversation with you all over the years, that sewer, unless there's been something done that I'm not aware of, uh, was already at its limit. And you're talking about putting in a four, four plaques of some type, that's four families using that sewer and adding to that sewer line. Uh, and I just have to question that a little bit, and I think that's something that needs to be on your mind as you're thinking about it. Also, the road itself, you do have the property now to build a road, uh, that's been taken care of. Uh, so, that, uh, the plaque that I did gave you that property. So, there's no reason for that road to exist the way it exists now. If that became a regular road, this would take all the questioning out of a lot of it because your traffic would be out. Um, and those are the two big things that I have that I, I just think that somebody...
You're okay.
I'm beating on things. I just think you need to look at that. Uh, the other things that have been brought up, yeah, I don't need to go over that again, so. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Does the applicant wish to rebut anything in the report or public comment?
Sure.
So, unfortunately, with the zone change, the, uh, the existing street, South Sunnyside, is out of the scope of, of the zone change. Uh, Mr. Burns, you mentioned section eight housing possibly that has not been the intent of the developer so far, um, to my understanding.
I could change you anytime.
Uh, he is not going to go with that.
I'm thinking on that.
Um, Mr. Ford, you referenced, uh, site plan, uh, how something is going to fit in, within the site. Um, that's something that's going to be addressed afterwards as part of the site plan review process with the city, as well as the, um, and then Mr. Amos, you said, the sewer capacity and the road capacity. Those are also things that are outside the scope of this zoning. If you guys have any questions dealing with the zone change, I can answer those, or any more questions about the proposed development. Thank you.
Okay, public comment is now closed for commission action. The floor is open to commissioners' comments.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Question action for staff. Um, has staff considered instead of, uh, uh, this proposal moving to a TF, two-family zoning instead?
That's the second option in the staff report.
Yeah. I, um, considered just doing two-family for your guys' recommendation, and the protective overlays in there. It's identical to what it would be for MF4. It just doesn't allow that multifamily, three and four development.
And is there any, um, could there be any potential problems with setbacks or anything like that if you have a four-plex up there? Considering, you know, parking and all that, do we have the space to actually do that?
What's the, because I've, I've lived on a, I had the same question. What's the frontage on Sunnyside?
The width of the lot?
Yeah.
Ninety-nine point five feet.
Ninety-nine point five by one-fifty.
There's a thirty-foot setback over there.
It sure is.
What are the setbacks around?
It has a thirty-foot building setback line that's been platted, I believe. Uh, fifteen-foot on 63rd Street since it's a corner lot, um, twenty feet on the rear, and then six feet on the side.
Six feet from my garage. Awesome. Can't wait.
More questions, Brandon?
Or general comment?
That, that does make for questions.
Who else?
So, I, I hear what you're saying, and I have the same concerns. What, what I personally am considering is whether or not a duplex for that lot would come close to maintaining the same feel as a single-family home. And with the protective overlay of that, that could have, you know, a, a fenced north or west line and south line, the parking would be in the front rather than the rear because, I, in my opinion, I don't think you've got enough room to get access to the back of that lot where it sits. And I understand what you're saying. I wouldn't want a parking lot behind my house either. Um, but for me, it comes down to, that's a one-way street, and you're right, it's not in good condition. It's not wide enough, and it sounds like there is a possibility that in the future that could be widened out to a two-way street if we've got platted across the, the other side of Sunnyside. But it's been this way for seventy-five years, and we can't expect that it's going to happen anytime soon. It's a possibility, but it's not something we can count on. Those are, those are my concerns. Um, the other thing is, what, what we are considering here today is not even what this particular developer wants to do. Because if we approve multifamily in any form or any kind of zone change, and they sell it next week, that next person can do whatever they want with it within that, and it wouldn't have any kind of reason to come through us unless they were doing something odd. They could put up a four-plex, they could put up a three-plex, they could do whatever within whatever code we write up. We're looking at the ground itself and not a specific use. So, that, that to me would be concerning also if I was one of the neighbors. I don't know if that creates more questions for any of you or more discussion, but that's kind of where I am.
Sir, the pu- public comment portion is over. So, that, we're discussing now, and I, I'm, I get that you have a question, and if I can clarify it, I, I will, but this is the time for us to speak now, and the public part is over.
You're talking about that widening Sunnyside. It looks like the, there is an easement on the east side of the road, but the last two lots there don't have an easement. So, that would have to be done even if...
To the north?
To the south. There's two lots that are, you know, butted to Sunnyside on the south, uh, which is what, 6509 and... I don't think the other one has an address, but 6509 and the one south of it.
It's not in the staff report, though, right?
Yeah, I know.
No, I understand. County GIS?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I spoke to our public works director earlier this week, um, and he's thought about widening South Sunnyside, um, but just conceptually. There's not enough right-of-way, so it would require a right-of-way acquisition to actually do it. But currently, the street is fifteen feet wide.
I would entertain a motion.
I think a good compromise is if we recommend, uh, an approval with the amendment to a two-family zoning, uh, with the protective overlays that were laid out for that. So, that is an motion.
Anybody second?
I'll second. Would you, uh, entertain the, in addition to that?
Sure.
One of, one of my other concerns is, and it seems like the county has it addressed, but if, if we're going to go this direction, I want to make sure that it is written in with this property as it moves forward.
Yeah.
We have complete access control for the first twenty-five feet?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet on Sunnyside?
Or twenty-five, twenty-five feet for the two families, what I might...
I would also say complete access control against 63rd because it's not on the face of the plaque. So, if any changes at the county, I think that would be something that we would want to require also.
So amended?
Still seconded?
Yes.
I have a motion and second to approve duplex two-family with complete access control along the entire north side of 63rd.
And the protective overlays.
And the protective overlays listed in the staff report. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Nay. Okay. Um, Kaylin, what's the next step for this?
It still goes to city council.
Okay.
They can approve your recommendation of denial, or they can override your recommendation of denial, or they can send it back to you guys for further review.
Okay. Everybody catch that?
Yep.
And the next council meeting that it will be heard at will be, most likely?
October fourteenth.
Okay. That takes care of any notification issues that you guys should have, right? Okay.
If you guys want to all step outside, I'm going to go over your options with you in so that you can hear you better, and they can continue.
Okay. Item B under new business review of text amendment to the zoning regulations, change to Article One, title, purpose, authority, and jurisdiction. Article Two, interpretation, construction, and definitions, and Article Seven, administration and enforcement.
Did everyone have a chance to read the violations and enforcement section?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I handed you guys the new table of contents before we started. Uh, you have the current one in front of you that just lists what everything currently is, and then the proposed one. Uh, we're going to be consolidating some of our articles, and then, um, taking stuff out of some articles and making them their own. Uh, like definitions will be its own article. Um, each district will have its own article, so residential zoning districts, commercial zoning districts, industrial zoning districts. Uh, we're adding in a violation to enforcement section, which is what you guys all read earlier, but that's about the gist with the table of contents.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
Any of us to make a recommendation?
No. This is just our review.
Okay.
Um, if you guys want to flip to Article One in your binders. We renamed our Article One to Legal Framework because we've consolidated it with Article One and Article Two. So, our title, purpose, authority, and jurisdiction are now with our interpretation of, and instructions, and our interpretation, or interpretation and our construction, as well as our vested rights. Title, purpose, authority, and jurisdiction didn't change much. We just added a bit of legal words, um, about severability. So, if anything is in these regulations is found invalid, the rest of it is still valid. Um, and then a provision for how we amend the regulations has also been added. Rules of interpretation is the same. Rule of construction, we've added in 300C, 300D, and 300E. These are our rules for the words in these regulations. So, if anything's defined in a different chapter, uh, we'll go with that definition. If it's not defined in these regulations, if it's defined by state statute, we'll go with that definition. And then for all illustrations, because in the definitions, if you guys reviewed those earlier, we did add some illustrations to our definitions. So, if there's a regulatory provision in there, whatever is actually written down is what is interpreted. For vested rights and pre-existing development, we've added 103C, 103D, 103E, and 103F. These are just rules for existing buildings. And then for 103G, we added in the state statute for vesting of development rights. We already had this, but it was inaccurate. So, this references the KSA 12764 and the exact wording that is in the state statute. But that's all I have for Article One. The majority of Article Two is all new. We've added in the rules and responsibilities for our zoning administrator, the planning commission, and the board of zoning appeals. And we've added in all of the procedures for conditional uses, zone changes, variances, appeals, protests, everything to do with zoning regulations. The procedures have been added in. We had some of this for conditional uses, so that language has been adopted for everything else and altered for how it works in our staff procedures. But we're codifying this. Uh, we have a bit of concern with some people retiring in the future. Uh, so if we have everything written down now, hopefully that will ease some transition five, ten years from now for how the city processes work, not only for people who work for the city, but for residents reading the regulations, developers reading the really, regulations, anyone who comes into contact with it. And that works with Article 11, violations and enforcement. Currently, the only thing we have on violations and enforcement is hidden underneath our administration article in the zoning regulations, and it just lists the penalty for what happens if you're in violation of zoning regulations. So, we have, um, drafted the types of violations and the enforcement procedures.
Any other questions or staff? General discussion?
No.
Okay. Item C, review of the planning commission bylaws.
I hope you guys are all familiar with these and have read them before. Um, we're not changing anything. This is just our annual. Make sure you read them. Make sure you know the rules.
No approval needed?
No.
But it sounds like homework, so...
I hope you read it.
Uh, no old business or correspondence?
No.
Uh, next meeting day?
September eleventh.
We have something on the agenda for that already?
Yes. We have two things.
Item nine.
I move adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Does it pose? Thank you, everybody.